Say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller? Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. Any citizens' comments? Okay. And we have no public hearings, so we'll move right along to the reading and approval of minutes.
I'll move approval of the six fourteen regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. In the condensed minutes, I'll move approval of those condensed minutes from six fourteen twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Along to the consent agenda, which is the audit of the city bills, the pay estimate number four for the runway reconstruction extension phase two, gambling reports, and the library board minutes. And I will move approval of those.
I'll second.
Okay, I was just... Oh, yeah, there's library board. Okay. Any discussion on those?
None here.
Oh, good.
I just had a question just to clarify, and I think it's pretty clarified, but the item eighteen, the east side park cleanup, and it has trees, storm, and then shade trees, so part of that comes from the city and part from the tree budget? Is that what the shade tree is?
Right, yeah, so there's some trees that aren't covered by the insurance.
Okay.
Tree or anything like that are covered by insurance, but any trees within a hundred feet of a covered structure property will go under insurance.
Okay. So then, that, so that's what the forty-two hundred is?
Will be cut, will be reversed.
Okay, okay.
And then the thirty-five hundred will go into the shade tree budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, as long as we're talking there, line number forty, we had an eighty-one thousand dollar real lumbar seal coat. Which street did we seal coat?
That's a bunch of them.
Have they done the work yet, or just, are we just paid for it, or?
I guess...
Yeah, we must have paid for it.
I believe that they've done it.
Okay.
Done it all. I guess we're so busy with trees and stuff that didn't realize that they snuck in and did that.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed. And petitions, requests, and communications, the Prairie Harvest Fast Fireworks Show.
Yeah, so this, actually, we talked about in tourism, doing the fireworks show, and the city council approved five thousand dollars. And when I went to order it, one of the things the fireworks company said is their prices did go up, which I think we talked about that a little bit in the tourism. And actually, there's some concern that there's some fireworks companies went out of business during COVID because nobody was doing celebrations and stuff. But we were able to book our show and, for the five thousand dollars, but I'm recommending that we up that another twenty-five hundred dollars. And that'll be more closer to the show that we had when we did a normal show last year, so it's a little bit bigger because the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And this will come out of lodging tax funds. Just looking for a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Prairie Harvest Fast Fireworks Show in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll second. Okay, is there any discussion on that? Further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Ordinances and resolutions, first one being a resolution to enter into an agreement for Transit Grant Funding twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, this is the annual Transit Grant that we have to do, and I don't know if there's anything in particular you want to mention, Whitney, on this?
The state recommended that we increase ten percent of our twenty-twenty-two O R, and that would be what they'd be giving out. So we were pretty happy with that, and then the only difference of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one was that there was COVID money, so it was a hundred percent covered. There'll be a five percent local match, but we feel confident that we can absorb that with fair covenant, so there shouldn't be anything coming out of the city budget at all for Transit.
Great. I'll move, yeah, I'll move on the resolution to enter into the agreement for Transit Grant Funding twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? And we'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller? Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. Okay, then the resolution authorizing fund transfers.
I didn't have a copy of that one in my packet. Was that for some reason? One second. You remember which one that was?
It's attached to the Transit one.
Oh, it's, it's on, okay. Oh, okay, yep. So this is just the normal fund transfers back and forth? Right?
Right, yep, so it's just the, every year, there's budgeted transfers that go into when the budget prep is prepared. And so these are the ones that get done every year with this time, just to actually do the transfers. You guys approve the budget with a minute, but this is to give approval to create the general truth to actual transfers to the different projects.
Yeah, so it's just normal budget transfer items.
I'll move on that, resolution authorizing fund transfers.
I'll say it.
Okay, and I will do a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Miller? Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. Okay, now we're on to resolution authorizing the DocuWare system.
Yeah, so one of the things Whitney's been doing a really good job working on, and actually, we're getting a lot of prompting from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. We get some prompting from our IT people that are working with us out of Lakes Country Service Cooperative. But one of the big issues that we face is cybersecurity and what happens with our documents. And actually, we've done a lot of work in the last, last couple of years to get a new network system that's standalone so that somebody can't hack into our system and steal all of our information. And I can tell you, it's an ongoing battle. I think I had four emails today that I had to delete because they're phishing emails. We've been doing some training on that. Sometimes council members' names come up, sometimes it's just the city of Morris, sometimes it's other things that come up that look like a normal... We're sending your invoice, and it's like, we, we don't know who you are. But if you click on it, then they're, they get their foot in the door. And so one of the things that we talked about too is, you know, where our documents are stored, and sometimes, you know, we have big boxes full of documents, and eventually, we take them from City Hall, and we put them into a storied site. And there's probably a better way of accessing those documents that, that we need to deal with. Audit time's usually a really big time that they're looking, they want to go through our documents and look at stuff that we're doing. And so this is something that Whitney brought up, that it's a system of being able to process and store documents so that they're in a more secure place, and we don't have to, we don't have to worry about it as much. So the recommendation is to authorize entering into an agreement with DocuWare Systems for processing and storing our documents. And you can see the price, the initial price is about eight thousand dollars to get in, and it's about thirty-six hundred, thirty-seven hundred dollars a year for them to take care of our documents. And there's probably going to be more stuff coming down the line. You know, it is one of the bigger insurance items that the league is dealing with now, and, and there are cities that have literally shut down because somebody got into the computer system and shut down the whole system. It's, it's not as big a deal when you're talking about storing some documents that are just stored. But when, when your payroll gets shut down, or your accounts payable gets shut down, and you can't pay bills and things like that, it's, it gets to be a big thing.
So is this an electronic data, data storage system?
Right, so that's part of mostly of what that is, but then it's also just safeguarding our critical data too. Because, and especially with all the storms lately, we kind of made the push, it's like, we have all paper files over there, and if something were to happen to City Hall, we don't have those master files safe or anything. So this will all just like be helping to get us more into the current times, but also protecting our data even more. So, and it increases efficiencies, and especially on audit time, when they're wanting us to dig boxes and scan and copy where we could just drag and drop into emails or into their secure portal as well. But it's just like, like Blaine said, there's more of this to come, but this is kind of just getting us started on this process and getting those official files safe, and it's backed up on six different servers every night. So that's one of the questions I want to make sure when I looked at this company is that, how safe is our data out there? And are you, you know, is it reliable? And the other cool thing is that it's local support, it's not just somebody across the world that you're going to get to, it's actually people. Our server, server would be out of owner. And he came in that class, so we know it's real people with... Better, I think it's going to be a great system if you were to approve it.
So do you have to then move your paper files into the system? Eventually, that's what the process is?
Right, they provide with this quote, so it's at the eight thousand includes that first thirty-six hundred year two. So really, it's only less than four thousand to do the initial setup and everything, and they provide, I think it's like twenty hours that they would help us get back years scans. But then we've also talked as a team that we'd be able to utilize Ashley and Stacy too, that they could help us get scan, back scan done as well.
And then what does the annual cost cover?
That would cover the, basically, the storage and then any support that we'd need too.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, I think it's a good idea. My question is, when you, you speak of audit time, and I know it's, do they require a physical copy, or would the backup copy or electronic copy work? You know, if we, if we just...
Sorry.
Do they recognize, which one do they recognize or prefer?
They prefer electronic.
They do?
Yep, because everything goes onto their portal, basically their online portal, so that they can be working on it too. And so they prefer everything electronically into that portal, so we could just be dragging and dropping instead of digging and...
Well, it'll certainly help us too then.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
There's all kinds of systems that were a lot more expensive, but I tried to go, you know, more conservative in that. I think this would be, this would fill our needs too. And there's also with this company, more add-ons in the future, we just want to add different documents, you know, like billing permits or whatever in the future too. So, which is kind of just a good start to get us safeguarding our material better as well.
Well, getting it all in a system electronically is huge, so...
And the other nice thing is it can communicate with our accounting software too, so it's compatible, so that's a huge thing.
Well, I don't know, I've seen how much other EDMF systems are, and this one is very, very inexpensive compared to those. So, and it sounds like you've done your research in looking at what's best for the city here. So I'm going to go ahead and make motion approving that resolution authorizing the DocuWare system.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Miller? Waller?
Yes.
Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. Okay, a resolution approving Click Content Marketing Plan.
Yeah, so the Tourism Board met and, with Amy Orrin from Click Content Studios, and she made a proposal to expand what we're doing as far as marketing and actually reaching out and making some connections with some of the, the mark, marketing, you know, newspapers, radio stations, actually, one of the things that we talked about is doing some television type of things. But the big part of this is that there's really good coordination locally. Councilmember Waller is part of this group. Right now, they're working, she's working very closely with the Stevens County Fair to develop videos that can be marketed on social media and probably even some TV commercials, but making those connections to the various areas that we need to make them. And one of the things I shared in here, when we initially started the whole lodging tax thing, we really struggled that. You know, it was taking in quite a bit of money and struggled that, you know, where do we actually spend this money to market? And I think right now, we have a really good group of people working on the Tourism Board. We have a really good connection with some of the key elements in the community that, that are putting things on. And we have a really good system of doing marketing. And, and so this is just one more step in that. As I indicated in here, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars right now in the lodging tax fund. That fund takes in probably about fifty thousand dollars a year, for sure. I know the Grand State is doing very well. It's based on three percent tax on, on rooms, and, and eventually, the, the, the other hotel is going to, I know the individual that bought it is working on it to get that up and running, and hopefully is going to start renting out rooms within the year there. But there's money to do it, it's a good plan, and, and the Tourism Board looked at it, and they're recommending that we go ahead and we do this. And I think I sent you a sample of one of their thirty-second videos. They actually took, one of the things that we've done is we've taken film of a lot of the major events, like the fair, Prairie Pioneer Days. There's film, film and photos that was taken of the flower gardens and fishing and snowmobiling and just all kinds of things. And so now they can take that footage and that, that data, and they can start cutting it into little promos and things like that. And so it's, it's kind of fun to watch the end result of it, you know, and, and, you know, you'll see it on social media. We do get a lot of, we get a lot of input back on social media that people see it, and they like it, and they share it. And this is just going another step.
Yeah, I can attest to that, Blaine, it's having been on the Tourism Board, really since I've been here, and having gone through previous marketing companies, and there was always a disconnect. The communication process didn't, just didn't flow back and forth like it does with Click Content. Now, Amy is very, very good, she, she, she lets us know what, what is going on, and it, it's just been real fun working with, with Click Content. It's been a very good experience, so I, I think it's really my, very good money well spent. With that, I'll move on that resolution approving Click Content Marketing Plan.
Yeah, I seen the video, I thought it was well done.
Yeah, she's, it's, she's very thorough.
The fishing guy was kind of sketchy. Took center stage, really showed it up.
Well, they just take ownership of everything they do, and it's just, she has a very, it's just almost like this is her community. You know, you just don't see that. They're not just in it for the money. I mean, she truly cares about what, you know, about our city and the results, very results-oriented, so it's, it's just fun.
So is this a one-time fee, like just for this, this, these specific things, or is this annual?
This will take us through the end of the year.
It'll take us through the end of the year, and then we'll come back, and we'll take a look at, you know, what we want to do for next year. And, and then there's some specific key things that are in there, like doing some stuff specifically for the Stevens County Fair and, and some other things.
In this price right here?
And then, yep.
Okay.
So there's like four videos that they're, they're going to do, and they're working directly with Teague, Peash, and, and the fair, fair board people on, on doing that kind of stuff.
It seems like a lot of money, but when you look at what actually is involved in this, all the different entities she's working with to coordinate all these different marketing things, it's, it's really very professional.
And, well, no, I'm not, and that's why we have a Tourism Board or any board, because they're the ones that do most of the, the digging in and fine tuning things. So if, if they're recommended, I just was thinking if, you know, Blaine said we take in fifty thousand dollars a year, and every year, we're going to be spending this amount, that's pretty much the annual take-in. So if, I'm assuming they've done due diligence, you've been at the meetings and saying this is the ticket, so...
Yeah, there's some really good people that are sitting on that Tourism Board that are really knowledgeable about those kind of things, and it's kind of fun to watch them ask, ask questions and talk about, you know, kind of what they do and what they're looking for. And then, obviously, the end result is, what are you producing? And, you know, we've seen videos, the, you know, the footage of things that they've, you know, they do drone work. So to see a drone flying over a wetland, or to see a drone flying through the, the fairgrounds during the fair. I know that they, they, they're talking about, like, for the, the fair, doing a video on food, on rides, on other events and stuff like that, to give people an idea of what we do here, and, and then get it out to people so they can come here and be part of it. But, but I, you know, I think there's money in the fun now to do these kind of things, but we're always, I mean, one of the things on the agenda is how much money do we have to work with, and then we just tailor it based upon that, because there's some other things, like even the annual celebration. We're spending some money on fireworks, we're spending some money on, on games for the community event in the fall. So we'll watch that really close. Well, I think it's a good idea, I like that, what you're doing with that. Appreciate your work on that, Kevin, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second, I'll do roll call vote.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes. Oh, Miller, I'm sorry.
You're so excited for your deal, that's good.
I got to get my ears cleaned up.
Salvi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. All right, next, the resolution authorizing advertising for proposals for the Transit Bus Garage.
Yeah, so I've been working on this for about two months. Actually, I got a RFP sample from another Transit system that did a bus garage up in Little Falls. Actually, I talked to the architect that did that project on, at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference last week. But, yeah, what this is, we have a grant from the state of Minn, actually, two grants that got rolled into one. Well, it's actually three grants, because the electric transit bus is part of this, this process too. So they rolled them all into one big project, but it's about a million-dollar project for adding on to the current bus garage, which now has five bays, and we're going to add an office that has a conference room and a couple office spaces, a locker room, some storage, and, and a break space, and then we're going to add three additional bus stalls and then a wash bay. And so the first step in this process was to do a preliminary design for the project, which was done by TKDA engineer, architects, and that gave us the basics for what we wanted to see in this grant. And, and now the next step is to hire an architect and engineering firm to do the, the final design, the plans and specifications, bid out the project, and then oversee the construction of it. And so the timeline for this is to do the design work this year. After the beginning of the year, we would bid it out with the contractor coming in, in the spring, and doing the work and completing it by the end of next year. It's a state, state and federal kind of share of a project, so the paperwork's a lot more on it. But at the same time, you know, it's fairly straightforward in how we, how we do this. And the proposal is to accept proposals until August fourth, and then we would sit down, we would review them, and then select an architect, and then, it's kind of like, it works with the airport. So you select the, the firm that's going to do the work, and then you sit down and you look at the price. Price is not part of the proposal. It actually, they prohibit you from looking at price as part of the proposal. And then you would negotiate a price with the architect firm, it's the way this, it's the way they do it with the state contracts. Because they don't want, they don't want somebody just to low-bid it and then come in and create problems. They, they want to make sure you're, you're finding an architect, engineering firm, that has the capability of doing the work that you need done. And then, you know, like we saw in the airport stuff, they tend to be fairly close in price anyway, you know, these firms. But, so the recommendation is to authorize me to go ahead and advertise that, and we have a RFP packet that we put together, and we would make that available online and, and give it out to architectural firms. And then we'll take a look at who, who submits one. This is, and you, if you remember, this is, the local share to that million-dollar project is about two hundred thousand dollars. So we budgeted money for that, and actually, we won't need it this year, so then we'll re-budget it for next year, because we, we, well, we might spend a little bit on the architects, but it's kind of the way it works.
I'll go ahead and approve a resolution authorizing advertising proposals for the Morris Transit Office and Bus Garage Project.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
No.
Okay, let's do roll call vote.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller? Mary Lee? Mayor Proton Phillips?
Yes. Okay, and the final resolution approving additional fire hall roof repairs.
So the fire hall roof was damaged during the May twelve storm, and then we wound up getting a, well, we found a company that would come in and do kind of a temporary repair to cover up the roof so that we wouldn't have more water damage on the inside. And actually, a subsequent storm created another problem with that. But they wouldn't let us go ahead and get the roof fixed until we got a second quote. And the normal company that we used to get quotes from was so busy doing work on other projects, especially because they're from Alec, and Alec got hit pretty hard up there. And we finally found a second quote, and then there is a discussion about maybe doing a couple modifications to the, to the roof to prevent some of the things that they saw happening in the past, especially around pieces of equipment. You know, because water would pool up and sit there until it'd eventually dry out. And, and that created a major conflict, because the original company that came in when we were, I mean, it was hard to find anybody to come in. They had a bid to fix it the way it was, and the second quote to fix it the way it was, they were the low bidder. And then we had some modifications that we, we were looking at, and, and so then they did second quotes. And so the other company got the second quote to do all of the work, including the modifications. And I can tell you exactly what would have happened, is the first company would have walked, and we would have wound up probably trying to figure out what we're going to do with the roof. Is the first company would've walked and we would've wound up, um, probably trying to figure out what we're gonna do with the roof and so what we did was we took. And the insurance company paid to fix it the way it was. And so then what we did is we got a second quote from the company that was gonna fix it the way it was. To do the modifications and that's what this is. You know, it's additional work to do the modifications, the first part of it's already covered by insurance, we don't have to worry about it. So now we get the modifications done for this twenty-two thousand dollars, the roof is gonna be completely done and one of the things that, you know. I, I, I forgot about, but somebody made me aware of the fact that the, this roof was scheduled to be replaced probably in the next couple of years. And the estimate that we had in the budget was about a hundred and twenty-five grand. You know, so realistically, you're getting all this stuff done for about twenty-three thousand dollars and that roof should be good for quite a while. Um, and it's just the way it works during these insurance events that we have. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and we authorize this additional work, they're gonna be coming in the next. Tomorrow maybe, in the next couple of days to do all the work and then the roof will be fixed.
You think when they engineer these roofs, when they actually built it, they would build it so it doesn't do these things?
Right.
I mean.
Yeah.
Then you gotta come back after a while and it's already built, then you gotta re-modify it to.
Right.
You know, to drain, I mean, you know, it's just, it blows my mind, it's almost, it's almost like the engineer so that you have to come back and.
Right.
I, I, I see that we have to do it anyways and, and uh, it is probably cheaper to do it now than any other time, so I would, I would move on this proposal. Approving the additional fire hall roof repairs.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? So this will be now pitched right?
It'll be pitched right and the places that they need it and the holes are gonna be opened up enough where the water's gonna be able to get out and it won't be pooling up. The way it was before.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote on that.
Councilor Solvi.
Yes.
Wallers.
Yes.
Miller. Mary Lee. Mayor Prochey Phillips.
Yes. Okay, and then city managers' reports and recommendations.
Uh, I'll just touch on a couple of things, um, the last storm that we had, we had a, a, a number of trees went back down again. You know, so I think, um, Russ said we had about twenty-six more trees that we're gonna have to deal with and, and so they've been very busy. Uh, trying to get at some of the worst trees on the boulevard and, and, and we had to, we spent the whole day just picking up debris. From boulevards again, cause people had damaged branches and stuff and. They're getting pretty used to just setting it on the boulevard and then when we get a chance, we go pick them up, so. Um, they're busy working on that stuff, um, it's budget time. So the next council meeting, I'll have a, uh, some twenty-twenty-three budget guidance for you to take a look at, so we can start prepping the budget for next year. Um, and then the last thing I would just mention is that uh. The uh, it, it, it appears, uh, Joe, Joe Riley Construction is not gonna come into town to start on our project until about the middle of July. And so I, I did have a discussion with Chris Riley, who's the president at Joe Riley Construction, uh, about that, I think it's late. I, 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 their, their completion date in the contract is September thirtieth. Uh, substantial completion with uh, full completion by mid-October and uh, we'll, we'll see what happens, but uh. We have three distinct project areas with Sixth Street, Columbia Avenue and Iowa Avenue and so. Um, it's important that they don't just tear everything up and, and that they focus on the individual parts of that, but uh. It is what it is, I mean, that's uh, you know, normally we're fighting to keep them from starting early and. Too early in the season, you know, when they wanna get in and start digging stuff up before it's, starts drying out a little bit, but uh. Hopefully, it's a dry August, September. And that's all I have.
Were we thinking that they were gonna come a little earlier than that, I mean?
Normally, they, normally a construction company's gonna come in the end of May for sure.
Usually, we would start May fifteenth.
Yep.
Would be the normal starting date.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, for all the years I've.
That's a pretty, that's a pretty tight window for them to finish that project, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is.
They'll have trouble.
Yeah, and they, they know it, we know it, everybody knows it, so we just.
No, Sixth Street is old sewer, old water, all the way up there, pretty narrow, you know, all the side services, it's pretty densely populated with, with houses, so there's a lot of work there.
Yeah.
Well, April was a complete bust, I mean, there was really not much happened in April this year.
You don't wanna start in April anyways, it's too wet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and I think they were finishing, I think their plan was to finish project up in the spring. From, from another community and, and uh, and then come in and start on ours. But it's, it's the first contract really that we're doing with the new company and so then they're working through all their different. Uh, things that they're doing with, with their people and, and uh, we'll just, we'll, you know, what, the one thing I told. The one thing I told Chris, and Chris is really good about it, the one thing I told him is you need to keep us informed as to what's going on, cause I don't wanna be. Calling you to find out, you know, on April fifteenth that you're not showing up. You know, that, that it's just really important that we know exactly where you're at and what's gonna be happening, so we can let people. You know, there, somebody had called and asked if the rumor was true that we're putting off the construction project to next year. And it's like, no, we're doing it this year, we just normally would be starting on stuff. They'd have a lot, probably a lot of work done by now, you know, we're going into the end of June.
Yeah.
I have a question, when you were talking about the boulevard trees, are we still, are people still able to put their branches out on the boulevard to pick up?
Uh.
Kinda ending or what?
Well. Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not gonna stop picking them up, the, the, the issue is, is that they're gonna sit there for a while, because um, you know, the whole reason why we stopped picking them up was. We needed to kinda set a point in time where they could turn around and start focusing on taking down trees. And that's what they've been doing and, and trimming branches, cause there's actually a lot of. Bad branches that are still hanging out there and one of the things that they're noticing now is that there's trees that are split. So when the wind blows, you'll actually see the crack open and close and. Sometimes you don't see those things, but it, but if you identify that, then you gotta make sure you. Figure out what you're gonna do with those trees. But uh, yeah, so realistically, people, you know, we know their stuff's set out and, and we'll get to it when we can get to it.
So they're working with, because Russ doesn't have his city forest or anything, does he yet? So are they working with somebody who is.
Yeah.
Determining if these trees should be coming down or.
Yeah.
Going, you are.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fine with that, yeah, we don't have an issue with that. I mean, the.
With what, taking down the trees or?
We don't have an issue with taking down the trees, we don't have a dis- issue with identifying which ones are bad. Uh, we don't have any issues with that, it's, it, you know, the biggest issue is time. You know, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be all summer long dealing with these trees, especially now that we. And then we actually had a, a second insurance claim that was made, so. Um, Whitney mentioned that we did get reimbursed from insurance for trees that were in parks, so that's gonna happen again. Insurance adjuster's gonna come back out and, and we have a bunch of trees in parks that we're gonna be able to hire Craig Byer. Jeremy Michelson to come in and do them for us and then the insurance company will pay for it.
I just think it's really, that we, again, we have these boards for these different groups that, that give input and they. They, they work hard and they, they're spe- specialists in their thing, whether it's the tourism board, the park board, the tree board, so. I think we just really need to take into consideration what they're saying about. So I mean, we did with the, the um, click content and with their requests for the fireworks and like I said, we just had a park board meeting, so I just wanna make sure that we're taking in. To account the, the, the discussions at those meetings on what should happen and what could happen and I get where there's dangerous trees. Cause they're old, but I just wanna make sure that we're being cautious about not going down and.
Yeah, they're not taking out any trees that are questionable.
Okay.
As far as whether or not they should, they have no time to start taking trees that are questionable.
That's a good thing.
They have to take trees that they absolutely have to take, cause they're gonna come down. Uh, and we saw that in, in the last two windstorms we had. Um, cause we've had a couple of windstorms since the twelfth that took down trees and branches and all kinds of stuff.
All you gotta do is drive by our house every windstorm and see what we got laying around.
Right.
But it's, again, we're not taking down trees, it's like, well, that might be nature's way of shedding their whatever, all their limbs and.
Gee, you got something there?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there are lots of uh, things hanging up in the tops of the trees. You know, you'll see, if you drive around, you'll see ground out leaves and stuff like that. And so when they get up there and what they can do, sometimes they find cracks in trees, you know. So I think they're being very traditional, how far everything I've seen, I'm happy with Russ's work and the, and the crew's work. And I drive around looking, you know, so.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of dangerous things hanging up there.
Well, there's still some on power lines too, I've seen, so, yeah.
Yep.
I think we were just talking about finding the balance between the tree board and, and taking the step down and.
Yeah.
Listening to everybody's opinion and I appreciate yours and, and watching that, that's great and, and there are. Times that we just, they have to come down when they're in the way or, like you said, they're cracked and.
I think they're doing a tremendous job uh, with these three storms that happened, truthfully. You know, for a very limited crew, I mean, I'm very proud of them, actually.
Good.
Super.
And I think we all should.
Yeah, it seems like everything's getting cleaned up well and, and moving on, I see they're grinding some stumps now and.
And then you see more wind coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good, they're doing good right now.
No.
Yeah, they're ti- they're tired of trees, so.
Well, I get, yeah, I get that, yeah.
They, I mean, they, yeah, but they, they are doing a fabulous job, yeah. And the public's, the public's been really good about it, you know, I've, I had two calls today from people that. Are very nervous about trees that are on their, they're in front of their houses, cause they're cracked. And they're, they're just watching them and worried about, and then I had a call from somebody who. The tree, there's nothing wrong with the tree, I think they just wanted it out and it's like.
No time.
No time to taking trees out that don't need to be taken out and I think they found one Dutch elm tree.
Hmm.
Uh, I think down in one of the parks or something, but.
Green River Park, there's a tree that I don't, it, some, we're not sure if it's Dutch elm or if it got poisoned, like some chemical.
Yeah, something happened to it.
Something happened to it though.
Hmm.
It's a, it's a Princeton type elm, uh, which we haven't been that happy with that species anyway, but uh, we're still trying to figure it out. Unless Russ got some results, I'd talk to him later.
Good.
Yeah, so, and, any other questions?
I see we have porta potties outside the bathrooms there at East Side Park.
Yeah, we're still, I mean, that's, we're, we talked about that this morning at staff, we're, we're trying to get this company in to fix it and actually, um. You know, one of, one of the problems that we have is that the door is gonna be replaced and if somebody goes in there. Cause they can probably use the bathroom, but if somebody goes in there, they could get locked in there by somebody from the outside. But it's still waiting for the company to come in and do the repairs. So.
The toilets themselves are operable is what we kinda learned, but. It's still demolished the walls and stuff, so I encourage more if they see all the graffiti on there still, but then also the locking issue, they, someone could get locked in there.
So are the doors locked now? Oh, so you can't even get in?
Yeah, so you can't get in, so we put porta potties there.
Yeah, and our insurance adjuster had, the company's coming in May and then the storms happen, so they're doing emergency work versus that, so.
I guess, that, that brings me to something too, somebody uh, mentioned to me that there, there was a, in the Wells Park, the bathrooms in the Wells Park. Um, are not handicap accessible or are they? Uh, there was an incident, I guess, at the, a lot, they had a baseball. Deal there and, and a, and a poor lady was disabled and tried to get in and couldn't, and it was just.
Cause I think the door is really heavy, so if they shut it.
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't there, I was informed that it was just terrible, that. They know maybe because they're older or whatever, is there any way that we could probably put a handicapped portable?
Oh, porta potty out there.
Well, we're working on getting sidewalks, you know, to that too and that, you know, that.
But that's not gonna help the issue of the, the heavy door, they do prop it open, I noticed during games, but if somebody shuts it. I think the issue was it was extremely heavy, so if you.
I, 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 I wasn't there, I just know that they were, it was just.
Yeah, and part of the plan is to build a new bathroom concession stand that has ADA acceptable sizes and. And doors and all that kinda stuff, you know, which is, the requirement, you don't have to build a new concession stand.
Right.
You, you have to make it as compliant as you can, can, and that's one of the things. You know, what Kevin was talking about, bringing in sidewalks, cause it's in the middle of nowhere. And there's no way to get a wheelchair even to the building unless you're going through the grass, but. Uh, that is one of the things that we're working on and then the new, the new one. You know, cause what you're gonna see in the budget is probably a design uh, item for designing a new concession stand. It's way too small.
Oh, yeah.
Compared to the number of people bathroom wise, concession wise, for the number of people that use that facility, it's way too small. You know, so that's one of the items on the list to do. You know, and, and next year might be a good year to start looking at taking care of that.
Are you, the bathrooms handicapped?
Uh, the, the, the one out at Pomniker Park is.
And what makes it handicapped?
Um, be, well, we just did, we redid that one. Well, it has to do with the, the width of the doors and, and the room in between, you know, like we. Redid City Hall, we, we now have a handicapped accessible City Hall front door with openers and things like that, but. But there's a standard for how, how big the doors are in the, in the stalls. You know, so you, when you go to a handicap stall, you'll see that it's a straight big wide open. Space that they can get into versus the normal stall widths and stuff like that and.
Sink height too, I think, is an issue.
Sink height, yeah, there's, the, I mean, just the elevation leading up to it.
Yeah.
You know, it's all, you know, typically when you're doing road projects, they change every time you do a new road project, it seems like the. The grades, you know, you'll have a perfectly good sidewalk and you gotta rip it out, cause the grade changed. But for bathrooms and stuff, it's usually size of the stalls and number of stalls. So, and it's time, I mean, that, that is a very small little bathroom for that facility.
Yeah.
There's so many people that go there.
Well, and there's so many tournaments they keep hosting, so it's, and that's not gonna go away.
Yeah, and that's good for everybody.
Is there a lot more coming up this summer yet too?
I don't know a lot, I think a lot of them have.
Past it?
A lot of them have been passed, cause.
Book it, so I don't, maybe we just need to put it on their radar that maybe if they're having an event, they better, they better rent a handicaps uh, accessible.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can bring it up.
Porta potty, because I mean, you know, people in Morris probably know that. You know, and these tournaments are all okay, but when you come from out of town. You just, you don't know that and it, you know, it was just terrible for her and it was terrible for the poor people working the concessions and trying to help and everything, so. E- e- everybody was, nobody was really that upset about it, they just wanted to bring it to our attention, so.
Which is the best way, because then it's like, okay, here's what we need to do, just get something.
Right, right.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, and I, I never would've thought about it, I mean, been there many, many times and really never given any thoughts, so. Thought I would bring that to your attention.
Okay, any other business?
I have a, a prepared statement that I'd like to read on behalf of Brian and I and the Joint Services Commission. Uh, so I'll just read this. On behalf of the Morris City Council, we would like to provide the following update on the current status of the Morris Police Department. Councilmember Brian Solvi, Councilmember Kevin Wallers, City Manager Blaine Hill, along with representatives from the county. Met on Thursday, June sixteenth at four P M. to discuss the current law enforcement situation in Morris. Commissioners Donnie Wallers, Ron Staples, County Administrator Rebecca Young. Sheriff Jason Dingman, along with Chief Deputy Jason Reed were present for this meeting. We wanna let the citizens of Morris, along with the current members of the Morris Police Department, know. That no decisions have been made at this time regarding moving to a countywide policing system. We simply want to encourage all members of the community that public safety is our utmost concern. In addition, we want to inform all existing members of the Morris Police Department. That we as a city council are going to do everything we can to preserve the Morris Police Department. We take the issue of protecting the citizens of Morris very seriously. Our goal is to ensure the Morris Police Department will continue to protect and serve the Morris community for many years to come. Respectfully submitted, Councilmember Kevin Wallers and Brian Solvi, Joint Services Commission Representatives.
I want a copy.
I have one for you, Kate.
Couldn't get all that quickest? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I do have one other thing. I had received a call from a constituent regarding solar panels. And, you know, as everybody in the community knows, you know, the city has taken the lead on a lot of the green initiatives, solar panels and so forth on our, on our city office buildings. And this per- particular person wanted to know if we could provide information to the general public with regards to the benefits, cost, benefits type answers for residents as well. The, the person's point was if it's good enough for the city, why, you know, it must be good enough for residents also. So I guess maybe it is time that we try, and I don't know how we do this, Blaine, if we can provide information or if we could steer them to somewhere where they could get quotes for residential type applications for solar and costs. You know, so if you got a person that's considering putting solar on a building, for example, or a house, you know, if they could have access to some information that would let them or help them make that decision.
So,
Is there anything we can do?
Solar United Neighbors.
There's a website.
That's, that, that, they, there's a website, Solar United Neighbors. They coordinated the effort. There is some household solar next to you, actually. That was put up. And, and what they do is they provide all that information. They help organize a group of potential buyers to take a look at finding a company to provide solar and, and, and they, they, they do a lot of exactly what you're just talking about.
Can we put that on our website?
Yep.
Connection to that maybe?
Yeah, that's maybe all we need to do. Just as simple as letting people know.
I don't know.
Yep, cause that's, if you see solar on a house in Morris lately, it, it was probably done through that. It, it's not a cooperative. They, they use the term cooperative, but it's not a cooperative type arrangement. It's just a, a, a nonprofit that works with potential solar owners to help them facilitate doing things together. So they, they actually, the group that put up solar, they did like a cooperative purchase amongst themselves, not as part of a group to be able to get a better price for solar. And, and then they find a good company and, and it, it's, seems like a really good process.
Is that a local company then?
No, that, they're, they're a regional nonprofit that does it.
Do you know where they're located or?
I, I'll get you that information.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. And I think that's all this person was asking for.
Yeah, and if, you know, if, if you let that person know to just get ahold of me, then I can, I can put them in touch.
Okay. All right, I can do that.
Yeah, they're really good.
Thanks for the info. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else? Meeting adjourned.